Meeting is called to order at the time of 7:00 PM. Public portion of the meeting begins. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right to the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Business Administrator Board Secretary has cause notice of this meeting be published by having the date and time and place thereof posted on the bulletin board of a municipal building, communicated to the Herald, the record, and filed with the clerk of the borough of Hawthorne. Roll call, please.
Mr. Carr.
Here.
Mr. Clavio.
Here.
Mr. Doyle.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Colton?
Here.
Mr. Foose?
Here.
Mr. Shortway?
Here.
Mr. Totaro?
Here.
Mrs. Goff, here. Please stand and join me in the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Meeting regulations. During each regular meeting, two opportunities are provided for citizens to ask questions and to make comments. During the first opportunity early on the agenda, the meeting is open to the public for the purpose of addressing items listed for approval on this agenda only. The second opportunity occurs just prior to adjournment when citizens may address any subject matter that is pertinent to and are directly related to the operation of the school district. Persons wishing to speak must upon being recognized, rise, state their name, address the subject matter. Comments and questions shall be addressed to the board president or the presiding officer and should be limited to five minutes per person. The board may or may not respond to issues raised by members of the public at the time they are raised but will provide a response if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals who speaking. Please note the board will not respond to comments regarding students or board employees in light of the privacy rights held by those individuals. Moreover, the board discourages comments about such individuals and will not be responsible for such comments. Members of the public who choose to speak during this public session should carefully consider their comments as they could be held personally liable for any statements they make. Finally, please note that in accordance with district policy, the board will not officially comment on or respond to any matter mentioned unless it can confirm a matter has first been brought to the attention of the appropriate school personnel in an attempt to resolve the issue. At this time, publicly heard agenda items only. Approval of minutes, November 12th, regular meeting, public.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Clavio, seconded by Mr. Totaro, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Carr.
Yes.
Mr. Clavio.
Yes.
Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Colton?
Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Mr. Shortway?
Yes.
Mr. Totaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Goff.
Yes, and Ms. Amchar is here.
Okay. On the minutes, Ms. Amchar?
Yeah. Yes. Before I turn it over to Dr. Spreito, we did have correspondence from Magnitow, who is the representative from the Chamber of Commerce. She emailed us to thank everyone who was able to march in the parade. There were a number of us. It was brisk and it was brief, but it was nice to see the members of the public that were there. And we were in front of the bands, we got to hear them playing, and the cheerleaders were behind them and we were in back of the council. So it was a very nice placement that we ran and thank you to those members who walked with me. But Ms. Spreito wants to thank us on behalf of the chamber. Additionally, I was contacted by Irene Lutz of Roosevelt School. Mr. Carr, I'm all confused, is he this way? Yes, Mr. Carr did leave the volleyball flyer on everyone's desk here. We, the board, have been invited to play in a volleyball tournament. She did message me as well. It is January 17th at 7:00 PM and it is, we've been invited to play as one of the Roosevelt staff members. I broke my finger in the Wizards game doing the exact same thing a few weeks ago at my school, but I will definitely come and be there in spirit. Maybe I'll have some sort of like hand brace on, I don't know. But we will let you guys know for sure who can join in. But thank you for the invitation as well, we do be included in community events. Speaking of which, I'm so thankful that everyone could join us here this evening. It is a commitment of the board to get more members of the public to attend our meetings and to honor more members of the community. And this is the first of what I hope will be many larger gatherings for the board. As I said, it is a commitment of the board to make sure that we are honoring all members of our community for all of the accomplishments, big, small, academic, athletic, and otherwise. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Spreito, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Goff, who's going to read his board report.
Good evening all, I would like to start my report off by wishing you all happy holidays. I will now to get my report. For sports, winter sports teams are getting to meet in practice. We wish all of our teams good luck and hope they open their season strong. So far, Bears bowling team defeated Eastern Christians 7-0 on December 5th, and our hockey team hosted West Milford at the Ice Bowl on December 6th. The Hawthorne High School Student Council has voted for the Holiday Spirit Week themes. The Spirit Week takes place December 16th through the 20th. The themes are Monday, which is long winter's nap, where you wear your favorite holiday pajamas. Tuesday is Tree Topper Tuesday, where you wear your favorite headgear such as antlers, Santa hats, etc. Wednesday is Winter Wonderland, where you dress in white. Thursday is Family Holiday Card, where you match with friends. Friday is Ugly Spider Day. The entire school is invited to participate in this event. Hawthorne High School is extremely excited and proud to announce its partnership with Hakenstack University Hospital for its senior and junior program, allowing for internships and experience in the medical field. The annual Hawthorne High School Holiday Dance takes place on December 12th and the day after marks the senior volleyball tournament and Activity Day. The senior class collected wreaths from the wreath sale fundraiser on December 4th. The Hawthorne High School Musical Production, Peter and the Starcatcher, took place December 6th, 7th, and 8th. Congratulations to Ms. Phipps and Ms. Banker Ross for being recognized as the Governor's Educators of the Year and Educator's Service Professional. The Winter Concert takes place December 17th at 7:00 PM and Winter Break takes place December 21st through January 1st. Share Club hosted an Antipasto fundraiser in the month of November for one week, starting November 19th, for one of our teachers who went through surgery, and we would like to thank all of those who participated. Italian Club's Lotte Fonda Bake Sale fundraiser took place December 19th throughout the day. The Art Club meets December 19th and are focusing on winter themes. And the Hawthorne High School Spanish Club is hosting its annual man tournament on December 20th throughout the day. Additionally, they will be selling empanadas and other items and refreshments at the end of the day. Hawthorne High School students will participate in the hour of code on Wednesday, December 11th as part of the library's celebration of Computer Science Education Week. Our students will join millions of participants from more than 180 countries in this hour of guide explorations of coding and AI based on their skill level. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Dr. Spreito.
Okay, thank you very much. I have a number of things to share, so please bear with me. Just a few, a lot of shout outs and a lot of things to celebrate tonight. So I want to start, and Will mentioned the two teachers at the high school, but I want to just start by recognizing our teachers and paraprofessionals who were recognized as the Governor Educators of the Year and our Educational Services Professional of the Year. So each year, this is something that's done every year in our district and in all districts throughout the county, and the process starts with us asking for nominations. We ask parents and staff and community members to nominate teachers and some of our aides in our schools who they feel are worthy or deserving of this honor. And I'm happy to share tonight the 10 names of the people who were honored in our district. Now, we look forward to honoring them at a board meeting later in the year in May, but I just want to read their names tonight to recognize them publicly. So at Jefferson Elementary School, we have Teresa Cassidy Bennett, one of our preschool teachers, was recognized as Teacher of the Year, and one of our longtime paraprofessionals, Christine Bischoff, was recognized as the Educational Services Professional of the Year. At Roosevelt Elementary School, we have Amanda Lembo, a kindergarten teacher at Roosevelt, and Jean Estes, a paraprofessional, was recognized as the Educational Services Professional at Roosevelt School. At Washington School, Melanie Przeminski, our second grade teacher, was recognized as Teacher of the Year at Washington, and March Tamboro, a longtime school nurse, was recognized as the Educational Services Professional at Washington. Here at Lincoln Middle School, Tony Norgo, one of our English ELE teachers at Lincoln, was recognized as Teacher of the Year, and one of our guidance counselors, Aaron Horni, as Educational Services Professional of the Year. At the high school, and Will already mentioned, Mrs. Phipps, Michelle Phipps, one of our math teachers at the high school, was recognized as Teacher of the Year, and Allison Banker Ross, former, was that teacher at Lincoln, now Guidance Counselor at Hawthorne High School, was recognized as Ed Services Professional of the Year. So we're really happy to just share their names tonight. We look forward to honoring them publicly at our board meeting in May. I can also share with you that they'll be honored at a countywide luncheon that I'm actually co-chairing this year. But we look forward to honoring them, again, that'll be in May. But just, you know, well deserving, all of our recipients, and like I said, look forward to honoring them at a meeting later in the year. Speaking of honoring, at this time, what I'm going to do is I'm going to come out and I want to just talk about two things that honor some of our students. I'm going to start with something that we participate in every year, and this is from Mrs. Denise, Carol Denise, who's our longtime gifted Italian teacher here at Lincoln Middle School and really district wide. But she, the VFW each year hosts something called the Patriots Pen and Voice of Democracy Contest, where students write essays, and I actually had a chance, Mrs. Denise shared those essays with me. So for those of you who participated, I actually had a chance to read those essays and they were fantastic. You guys did a fantastic job in your essays. And we had five students who were recognized here at Lincoln Middle School as part of this contest. So I want to just ask them to come up when I call their names. So first place in this year's My Voice in America's Democracy VFW Essay Contest was Jeremy Melendez. Stay up here, Jeremy, I'm going to take a picture. Second place in this contest was Liam Rosario. And third place was Madeline Lazaro. And then we had two students who received honorable mention, and I'd like to call them up, Landon Riley and Ayana Luis. Oh yes, and we also, I also just want to share, I don't think Jordan is here, Jordan Soma. So Jordan, there's something in the high school that students also participate in. It's also called the Voice of Democracy Essay Audio Contest, and this year's theme was, is America today our forefather's vision? And at the high school, and I invited her, but she wasn't able to come tonight, Jordan Soma was actually recognized at Hawthorne High School as part of this contest as well. So congratulations to Jordan. Take a quick picture with these guys, open your certificates up. Take a picture with you guys, alright? Good? And just before they sit down, again, I have to tell you, you guys did a fantastic job. Mrs. Denise shared all your essays with me, I thought you guys did a great job in your essays. A lot of interesting information, they got a chance to talk about what democracy means to them. They talked about all kinds of things, the Bill Rights, talked about how they can use social media, which of course, right, these kids these days, right, we all talk about social media. But again, I thought you guys did an outstanding job in these essays and obviously being recognized. You know, we're really proud of you guys and just want to recognize your report big time, alright? Thanks for coming, congratulations. Alright, the second group that we'd like to recognize here tonight is our undefeated Lincoln Middle School Boy Soccer Team. So I'd like to ask Coach Jemberg and Coach Kirsner to come on up and join me. So before we honor, before we bring the boys up, to give them a little gift, which I'll talk about in a moment, I just want to share some of the statistics that coaches, the coaches gave to me and shared with me. And basically what they shared is that, obviously we all know that soccer's a team sport, right? And it really takes all the boys working together to be successful, right? That's with any team, but that was true with this team as well. And although some of them didn't have necessarily stats to share, they just wanted to, you know, that they're all deserving, and they all worked really hard to get where they are today, to be this undefeated team, I think the first ever undefeated team as far as I know. But we just want to congratulate all of them, but I do want to share some individual stats as well. So the team overall scored a total of 38 goals this season. And seventh grader Andrew Diaz, he had 10 goals and three assists. And seventh grader Parker Ratliff with 10 goals and four assists, that's amazing, 10 goals in a season, fantastic. Eighth grader Ronald Solenzaro had six goals for the Bears, and the remaining 12 goals were scored by Miguel Almonte, Onar Benevides, Chris Berrios, Gabe Gaddy, Danny Gonzalez, CJ Musa, Tristan Friskinis, and Davy Ruby, an eighth grader. Overall, one of the most significant contributing factors to the team's success was our goalie, Onar Benevides, who made 116 saves. That's about 15 saves a game, that's incredible. So what we'd like to do at this time is we're going to call all of you up individually. We have a little gift for you, and I want to just comment on two things about the gift. First of all, it was donated by Mr. Clavio and his family. So I want to thank Mr. Clavio for the donation of the gift. And I also want to share that it was, they were created by one of our alumni, right? Ms. Ordino's son, Woolford Working and Laser Engraving. So I want to thank them as well for their contribution here tonight. So coaches, I'm going to call them up, if you could give each one of the boys, alright? So one at a time, I'm going to call you guys up, just come on up instead of here and we'll take your picture. So we'll start with Vincent Ahn, come on up Vincent. Miguel Almonte. Onar Benevides. Daniel Bonifacio. Andrew Diaz. Lawrence Gallagher. Gabriel Gaddy. Daniel Gonzalez. Victor Laurel. David Martinez. Christian Musa. Tristan Friskinis. Parker Ratliff. Liam Rosario. Davy Ruby. Ronald Solenzaro. Chris Berrios. William Vargas. And finally, last but not least, William Watson. Alright, let's take a nice picture with the group. So guys, you're going to have to, some of you guys kneel on the floor.
Shorter guys in the floor.
Shorter guys in the floor, let's take a picture. You're in the picture. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Alright, over here, ready? We're gonna take it to you, 1, 2, 3. 1, 2, 3. Last one, 1, 2, 3. Alright, one more, big round of applause.
Guys, just wanna, in regards to that donation, just wanna let you know it was in memory of the late Mr. Koch. Mr. Koch used to be a, he wore different hats. He was a math teacher in the middle school. He was the high school golf coach. He was also the soccer middle school boys' coach. He was a supporter of the leadership camp, you know, he taught in it for many years. He was a good friend, a good teacher, and just wanted to put that out here. Out there to commemorate Mr. Koch.
So just a couple more things before we take a brief recess. Just a few more things I'd like to share. Some exciting things happening across the district. So I wanted to share an esports update. So many of you may not realize that we have an esports program at our high school. It's a club right now that students participate in. It's our largest club at the high school right now. And I want to share an update because our students at the high school actually participated in a state tournament, state final tournament at Georgia Court University last Saturday. So I want to share an update from Coach Miller, who's the advisor of the club. He says, he writes, "I just wanted to reach out and give you an update about our esports club and competitive teams. We recently went to Georgia Court University to compete in our very first statewide tournament. Both our Rocket League and Super Smash Brothers teams made it to the semifinals for our group. The Fort Harden are excited to have another run at the belt in the spring. Our Rocket League team also took a trip to Seton Hall to take a tour of the college and meet with their head of esports to discuss collegiate esports and scholarships." Believe it or not, there's actually scholarships for esports now. And there's actually colleges who have esports programs in large rooms where they support programs like this. And we're excited to have it at our high school as well. So Mr. Miller goes on to say, "On the club side of things, our numbers are growing. We are actively having new students joining every month. We have roughly 60 students that come to the club meetings during lunch to play video games, hang out with friends, and have a fun, safe space. Can't thank you all enough for the support you have given the club and myself. We have grown tenfold over the past two years and I'm excited to see where we can go from here." So we're really excited about that club, excited that they got to the state final tournament. We're looking to expand that esports club at the high school next year. But just a great opportunity for kids at our high school that I want to share. Something else that Will mentioned about our high school that I want to share that we just started, will actually be starting in January, is we're partnering with Hackett-Sack University Medical Center to have our students join in the High School Experience, our High School Explorer Program. So it's for our high school seniors. And basically what they can do, and Will's gonna be part of that, he's one of the 10 students who will be part of it, is students can apply to do a sort of a mini internship at Hackett-Sack University Medical Center. Students who are interested in the health field will have an opportunity to be mentored by someone at the hospital and work for 32 hours with their mentor in Hackett-Sack Hospital, and then have to complete a project at the end of the semester. So really excited about this new partnership. It's something that came out of our meeting that we had. I have a meeting with the students every fall to talk about things going on at the high school and things they'd like to see. And this is something that was brought up at that meeting. And after that meeting, I reached out to a contact I had at the hospital, and here we are. We're now part of this new program at Hackett-Sack University Medical Center. I'm really excited for our kids because it's a great opportunity for our high school students. And the hospital's excited too, they're excited to, just like we need teachers in the field of teaching, they need nurses as well and people in the health field. So it's a great partnership and we're looking forward to just kicking it off in the spring of this year and hopefully just growing the program in the future. A couple of other quick updates. Winter concerts in the fall production. I want to just congratulate all of our students who participated in the fall production. Peter and the Star Catcher, it was this past weekend, they actually was there on Sunday. Our students are just, they're just so impressive. I give them so much credit to be able to get up there and do what they do onstage and memorize all those lines. It's just amazing, they just continue to impress me. So I just wanted to congratulate everyone who was part of it, whether you're onstage or behind the scenes, as part of the stage crew, it's all important. And just congratulations to everybody who was part of it. Winter concert schedule, the Jefferson and Roosevelt concerts have already taken place on December 4th and 5th, but we still have concerts to come. Washington's winter concert is December 11th. We have the Lincoln Middle School concert on December 16th. Actually, I think that was delayed possibly. The high school is December 17th. And Tripp's Marketplace, always a big highlight, is December 17th at Roosevelt School. If you haven't been part of that, I'm sure many of you have because you've come through the elementary schools. But if you haven't, I encourage you to participate, go down to Roosevelt School. And they have a lot of great products the kids produce and sell at that marketplace. So those are just some upcoming events, they're all available on our website as well. Last two things I'll share before we take our little recess. I want to just take a moment to thank Mr. Shortway. This is his last meeting as a member of our board. And I just want to thank you for the last three years for your commitment and just your service to this district and to the students of this district. You've been a student advocate, you helped shape the educational experience for current and future students in Hawthorne. I just appreciate your service over the last three years and wish you nothing but the best going forward. So thank you, Mr. Shortway.
Thank you.
And in closing, I'd just like to wish everyone happy holidays and a happy and healthy 2025. With that being said, I think...
Thank you, Dr. Trudel. Yeah, we are going to take a five-minute recess. You're welcome to stay, but we don't want to bore you with any of the remaining board members. Please feel free to leave, but you're welcome to stay.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Be in the meeting, so if you'd like to stay, we welcome that. If not, please exit. Thank you to those who chose to stay. We are going to move on with the agenda. At this point, Dr. Trabona will be presenting the riveting chronic absenteeism data.
I don't wear somber, no.
I really wanted everyone to hear this, but, sorry.
Good evening, everybody. It's me again. This is a really quick presentation. Post-COVID, the DOE has put a lot of emphasis on social, emotional, and tracking students in chronic absenteeism and trying to get to root causes. With that, they release data every year. Like this year's data came stats in comparison between 22, 23, and 23, 24. And I'm going to share with you the district data, and you should all have the presentation in front of you. And I'm going to share with you two schools that we have to kind of focus on based on their rates of this. So basically, chronic absenteeism is considered when 10% of, if a student is absent more than 10% of the school year, it equates to approximately 18 days or more. And the reason they're focusing on that is because they feel that with that amount of absences, it correlates to poor performance, which is a direct link to test scores and subgroups and everything like that. What happens is your school is given a rate of absenteeism, basically takes all the chronic absentee children, gives what percent of your school is considered chronically absent, and then it does it district-wide. So as you can see, the data in front of you, our district is improving in our chronic absenteeism. Every one of our schools has decreased significantly, except Jefferson, which stayed the same, but they had a low chronic absentee rate to begin with. If you notice, there are two schools that are highlighted in red, Washington and Roosevelt Elementary School. Washington is at 10.6 chronic absenteeism, meaning 10% of their population, approximately 50 to 60 students are considered chronically absent. And Washington Elementary is at 16%. Even though that's high, they were at 22%, 21% last year, so we did have an increase. We track that internally. We have systems set up in place, but now we have to put some more formal systems in place based on New Jersey statute, which we have to identify, identify the kids, identify barriers, gain insight from the families, and kind of put into place an action plan to tackle this and get some of those kids into school. We sent out surveys over about a three to four week span to all Roosevelt and Washington families. You can see the results on the following page. We had about 80 participants from, 90 participants from Roosevelt and 40 participants from Washington. It gives you a breakdown of what they felt the biggest reason for their children being absent were. There was some write-in stuff that the principals and I are going through. We got some valuable insight, but the major is sick and illness. So what we have to then dig deeper into is to determine whether or not those are chronic illnesses. Is it school avoidance, where the parent is calling the child in sick? Is it medically documented? Because even if it's medically documented, it's still reported to the state and considered chronically absent, unless the student is put out medically on hold. So we're digging into that. You could see that a couple of things that came up were personal transportation, social, emotional challenges, and religious holidays that aren't in our calendar, but those were not big percentages. The majority of the percentages, about 90 to 95%, were due to children being sick, doctor's appointments, and then there was about 30, 20 to 30% dealing with people saying that they go on vacation, which we know. What you will notice is that the vacations really don't impact the chronically absent students. A lot of that is there, especially in the 18. Some components of chronic absenteeism cap, so we will be on a cap, which is just a corrective action plan. It just allows us to get deeper into the data, set goals for ourselves, and monitor those goals. I worked with Mr. Pazikin and Mrs. Passaro to develop those. I believe that Dr. Sprieto shared them with you in the board folder. We've instituted a school-level problem-solving team, which is going to coincide with our INRS teams. We already gave our survey, and then we have different Tier One and Tier Two strategies that we've identified and we're going to communicate out with. Our Tier One is we're going to work on altering what our morning meetings are going to look like, bring more of that. The research is showing that if you have a more cohesive morning meeting atmosphere at the elementary level, that a child has that transition from home to school life is a more natural transition. It decreases the anxiety. Mrs. Passaro is actually looking to transition in pilot-schoolwide morning meetings, maybe in the way to try them out to see whole-school community feeling the gym. That was one of her ideas. We are continuing with real-time doing the automatic calls home. That's just an awareness, let the parents know. With the younger kids, it's just that reminder that we're tracking it. So a lot of times, the parents don't call them in. It's that second reminder. And some daily check-ins with the homeroom teachers. So if we're noticing patterns with some of the students, we want to check with the homeroom teachers. Did something happen? Did you notice something? We're seeing trends. We're seeing Mondays, Fridays, you know, with littler kids a lot of times. So those weekend transitions, no holiday transitions, getting kids back into the building. That's where we see a lot of our issues come up. And then finally, Tier Two and Three strategies are going to be letters sent home. This is nothing new. We already have these in place at different increments. What we're looking at at the elementary level is lowering the increments. I believe it used to be on 10 absences. We're going to go seven and five. Just to put a little more fire under the parents, we're going to invite parents in after a certain amount of absences to sit down with that strategy meeting at the elementary level, because it's one of those things that if you mix it at the elementary, you could see that our high school chronic absenteeism is at a 5.3. So we're doing something right. We just have to really build that at the elementary level. Honestly, when they get to a certain absentee percentage, we're going to refer them to the INRS team. That's part of the process that we already do, because we want to dig deeper into the root cause. A lot of times, frustration with academics, social, emotional, school conflict with peers, those are all issues that we want to dig deeper in, so we need that team to really go into it. And then something that we've really pursued consistently in the past year was going through the truancy court if we have to. What we often battle with is chronic absenteeism basically correlates to neglect. When we do try to call DCP, DCF, I'm not really sure of the acronyms these days, their first question always is, have you gone to truancy? I will say that Officer Veda has been a great asset to our elementary parents. He will do wellness checks. He will do home visits if we're noticing a trend. We call him. He shows up. He knocks on the door. He normally gets grandma or grandpa sometimes. And, you know, that is sometimes enough to get the kids into school. So I told you it would be quick tonight. Somber, but quit. The good thing is, we have all of these things in place. We're continuing to decrease, and we're going to just continue to move forward even with this kind of protective plan at least.
Just a quick question?
Yes.
Just, thank you, by the way.
No problem.
Just, has there any been direct correlation post-COVID or pre-COVID analysis to evaluate, you know, is there, is there a greater sensitivity from parents or caretakers post-COVID that relates to uptick to nationwide or statewide?
So statewide, post-COVID, they're seeing more kids with like your school refusal and you're getting overbearers to get into school. So I think there was that time of being home, that there's just more the sense of you can stay home, or there's just not the push. So that is why the state has come down in 2022 and issued policy now where we have to track chronic absenteeism, and we have to do interventions to try to find a root cause for it, because our numbers statewide were never, you had your chronic absentee people, but your district numbers were never 10, 20.
There is a direct correlation.
Yes. And that is why now they're trying to fix it post-COVID years, is really they don't be.
I've got two questions.
Yes.
Thank you for the survey, by the way. How do we look compared to the state, and what's a good target number as far as the percentage?
So your target number, the state considers you fine if you're under 10% of your population. So each year, they give you a target to improve. So it's, it's similar to our test data. Your target is always changing. So in this sense, our target is always getting smaller. So even though we're increasing, we may not meet our target. Decreasing, we might not meet our target. So if Roosevelt is at 10%, their target next year is going to be a percentage of that. I believe it's about 1.5 to 2% decrease that they're looking for for them to meet with confidence. So they could decrease, but they may still not meet their, this target for their school. So each school has a different target based on their historical data.
How do we look in comparison to like neighboring districts, you know?
I will tell you that within the, within the Passaic County and my curriculum consortium, we're pretty comparable. I can tell you that Pompton has two schools on an action plan. West Milford has four schools, but they have many more schools than us on an action plan.
It's not a Hawthorne. It's not a Hawthorne issue specifically.
No. There's districts that have their entire district plus each of their schools on action.
It's definitely at a point where it's so pervasive. That's why they are trying to figure out a way to bring it in.
Correct.
But once again, the state is not supplying us with any sort of support fiscally or otherwise other than just giving us a number and saying, make it go away. But I can tell you, as someone who works in a different county and a different school, it is, it is a pervasive problem statewide. And it is a strangely post-COVID problem. I feel like parents now, if a child has the sniffles, it's, you're staying home. I feel like they're just taking illnesses more seriously. And obviously, as a parent, I understand that. It's sort of the culture shifted, and now we have to shift it back. It's particularly difficult with special education populations. They're missing large chunks of, it's, it's just, I understand why the state wants to fix it, but they're not helping.
If you do keep Miss Clivio into our data, this correlates with our subgroups that are struggling in our test work. So I gave you the overview of the data. Mrs. Passaro, Mr. Pazikin, and I, well, we're doing it. We can break it down by demographic, demographic brain reduced lunch, ML population, everything like that. We see a special ed population. We see a huge correlation to our subgroups that are underperforming. And we now have identified that when you take a percentage of your subgroup that's not performing because they're not in school, it makes sense now. Like kind of everything I've said now since August, all these factors are putting together. It's just another piece to the puzzle.
The highest is picking butts up.
Yes.
5.2?
5.2.
But we don't get any accolades for things we're doing well. We only get, you know, you get sanctioned for things that we're not doing.
I'm never up here talking about the good.
We're going to get you up there talking about something positive, I know.
But if you, and if there's any other data you want, or if you want to stay comparison, I could share it with Dr. Sprieto, or I could share it with Ms. Ror.
And just so the board knows, this is a brand-new practice as of this year. So this is the first year they're doing these corrective action plans for attendance. It is based on last year's.
And our data was just released late October, between October and November was our review period. It was finalized, I believe, around November 15th, which was when then we started knowing that we had to dig deeper. I met immediately with Mr. Pazikin and Mrs. Passaro when we had the action plans done, ready to go for this meeting. So we're, we're on our way.
Thank you, Dr. Sprieto.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay. Moving right along. Curriculum and Instruction is Erin Trout. Thank you, President Goff. Pursuant to the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Committee on Curriculum and Instruction recommends the following resolutions. CI-1 and CI-2 on page three, CI-3 through CI-13 on page four, and CI-14 and CI-15 on page five. On behalf of the committee, I so move.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Erin Trout, seconded by Mr. Palus. Any discussion? Yes, Ms. Colton.
I just wanted to, I know Dr. Spri already said something about esports club, but I see that there's another, we're approving another trip to Georgia.
That actually was the Georgia court trip. That was the one that took place. The problem is we didn't know at the last board meeting.
Oh, so this isn't to go back to in the spring?
No, this was unfortunately, like I said, we didn't know that they were getting into this state tournament until after the last board meeting.
Okay.
So they're going to put on this one.
Well, I was gonna say.
They're going to Seton Hall.
Congratulations.
They're going to Seton Hall.
For this, oh, for the spring one. Oh, yes. Okay. Never mind.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Clivio.
Yes.
Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Ms. Erin Trout?
Yes.
Ms. Mulkey Colton?
Yes.
Mr. Palus?
Yes.
Mr. Shortway?
Yes.
Mrs. Tataro?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mrs. Goff?
Yes. Ms. Erin Trout, back to you for personnel.
Thank you, President Goff. The following resolutions are pursuant to the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools. P-1 through P-4 on page five, P-5 through P-18 on page six, P-19 through P-28 on page seven, which continues onto page eight through P-33. On behalf of the committee, I so move.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Erin Trout, seconded by Mr. Carr. Any discussion?
President Goff.
Yes.
I just want to say, welcome to all the new hires. And I'm really sad to see P-1, because I've only been on the board here, and I'm bummed, but also happy for Dr. Sprieto.
Any other discussion?
Same, mixed emotions on P-1.
We don't know.
I mean, you can, but he's going either way, so.
I have something I was going to share, but I'll wait till the end of the meeting and share what I want to share.
We're all jealous that you are retiring. That's what it comes down to.
Before we do, I just want to thank Ms. Murray. I know we've, some of the board members had a chance to do that, but I just want to thank Ms. Murray for her service to us. It's been a pleasure working with you, although we'll be in a short time. And, but I just, again, thank you for all that you've done. I know there wasn't, there's a lot going on when you got here. And there's, it was a tough year last year with the budget, but I appreciate the way we were able to work together to make it all work, and I wish all the best going forward.
Thank you.
You'll be here nice and long, right? Okay. I'll save it. I can't do it all at once. Any other discussion?
Right here.
Yes, Ms. Erin Trout.
Echoing most of the comments that have been made already regarding P-1 and P-2, of course, wanted to welcome the few new hires and noticed there are two student teachers joining us. So welcome to them as well. And thank you for all the teachers and staff members that are shock throwing the holiday dance. I know that's getting approved on there too, so we appreciate that. And I'm sure there'll be more comments down the road about P-1 and P-2, but again, thank you, Ms. Murray, for everything.
Thank you.
Sure.
Just, I just want to give a shout-out to Ms. Graver and Ms. Renee, Marcy Renee, who are assisting with the play, the Lincoln Middle School Drama Production. We didn't have someone to fill that role. They were kind enough to jump in and take on that responsibility because we just didn't have someone to oversee it, and we really wanted it to happen this year. So I just want to thank all of them. We literally just found out today that they were going to do it, but I just want to publicly thank them. It means a lot because the kids really enjoy it, as do the parents, of course, but I want to thank them for stepping in to help out.
I think it's so awesome when high school staff members and middle school staff members just coexist, because the students really love seeing them when they get up to the high school after having them at the middle school.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Ms. Erin Trout.
Yes.
Ms. Mulkey Colton.
Yes, staying up. You won.
Mr. Palus.
Yes.
Mr. Shortway.
Yes.
Mrs. Tataro.
Yes, for reservation on P-1 and P-2.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Clivio?
Yes.
Mrs. Goff?
Yes.
Mr. Clivio, Finance and Administration.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Finance Administration, on page nine, we have action items pursuant to the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools. The Committee on Finance and Administration recommends the following resolutions, F-1, that is, O-4. On behalf of the committee, I so move.
Second. Moved by Mr. Clivio, seconded by Ms. Erin Trout. Any discussion?
I do want to thank you again, Alex, for making the donation to the voice staff routine on behalf of Mr. Polk. Any of us who knew him know what a wonderful man that he was. And I'm very, very excited that we had so many people come tonight, so it was really great. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Erin Trout?
Yes.
Ms. Mulkey Colton?
Yes.
Mr. Palus?
Yes.
Mr. Shortway?
Yes.
Mr. Tataro?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Clivio?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mrs. Goff?
Yes.
Claims, Mr. Palus. Sorry, we gave it to you on your birthday week. Should we give you to Mr. Shortway?
I stay home on my birthday and review them. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. We'll have to cross-reference birthdays with the bill list.
Thank you. Now everybody gets to wish me happy birthday again, so thank you for that. In accordance with NJAC 6A:23-2:11B, C-3, and C-4, I reviewed the bills, and it's my recommendation that we make the payments for the month of December.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Palus, seconded by Mr. Clivio. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Mulkey Colton?
Yes.
Mr. Palus?
Yes.
Mr. Shortway?
Yes.
Mrs. Tataro?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Clivio?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Erin Trout?
Yes, with reservations regarding everything with Passaic County Tech.
Mrs. Goff?
Yes. Buildings and grounds, Mr. Tataro.
Sure. Thank you, Madam President. Pursuant to the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Committee on Buildings and Grounds recommends the following resolutions. BG-1 on page 10, continued on page 11, BG-2 through BG-3. On behalf of the committee, I so move.
Second. Moved by Mr. Tataro, seconded by Ms. Erin Trout. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Palus?
Yes.
Mr. Shortway?
Yes.
Mrs. Tataro?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Clivio?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Erin Trout?
Yes.
Ms. Mulkey Colton?
Yes.
Mrs. Goff?
Yes. Committee and liaison reports. We'll start with you, Mr. Carr, legislative.
Thank you, Madam President. On Monday, November 18th, Governor Murphy signed a series of bills into law, including the following, which is relevant for school boards or schools. Compensation and Promotion Transparency, S-2310-A4151, requires, requires all New Jersey employers to make reasonable efforts to announce, post, or otherwise make known opportunities for promotion that are advertised internally or externally on internet-based advertisements, postings, printed flyers, or other similar advertisements to all current employees in the affected department or departments of the employer's business prior to making a promotion decision. The law also requires employers to discuss, to disclose in each posting for new jobs and transfer opportunities that are advertised by the employer either externally or internally, the hourly wage or salary, or a range of the hourly wage or salary, and a general description of benefits and other compensation programs for which the employee would be eligible. This legislation also establishes penalties for noncompliance. That completes my report.
Wow, that was a reform. Thank you, Mr. Carr.
Mr. Clivio, Finance and Administration.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance Committee met December 3rd. On the agenda was grants and what we stand in regards to the different grants that are out there. New Jersey Clean Energy Grant, the final request is submitted November 12. That's for the amount of $660,000 for H-VAC work that was done. Also, Lincoln Roof SDA, the broad grant will be submitted for total request. Stabilization aid, data is being collected. The state is requiring additional information in regards to the aid they gave to make up for the original aid loss. So that additional data is being requested, and it's due January 15, 2025. Other than that, there's two grants that are pending. One of them is the Roof Grant for the Summer Work 2025, Lincoln Middle School, the other one for Jefferson School. And the other grant that's outstanding is the COPS Grant, which will be managed by the grant writer. Also, the agenda was negotiations with the HTA. The salary guides are being reviewed by NJSPA. The ratification meeting is scheduled, technically scheduled for May 19th. We also received an update on the different reserve accounts that the district head holds. The capital reserve account has a total of $3,123,677. The maintenance reserve account, which is close to the maximum percentage allowed, has a balance of $1,966,823. The excess surplus current year, almost all of it comes from extraordinary aid. That's in the amount of $1,059,402. And the undesignedated fund balance, which is a rainy day fund, which has the maximum cap of up to 2% of expenditures, has a balance of $2,111,345. The audit is almost complete, and the 2024-2025 budget continues to be worked on. That concludes the report.
Thank you, Mr. Clivio. Mr. Doyle, anything on policy?
Policy is very quiet. The only thing we have in a hopper still is the policy that's being mulled over for fan participation for sporting events. We're still waiting for guidance from the state and the NJSA, AAICRA, DC. So that'll probably be the first thing we'll be addressing at some point in the year. Other than that, nothing.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Erin Trout, both Council Liaison and Curriculum and Instruction.
For Council Liaison, I don't have a report, but the final meeting of the year will be Wednesday, the 18th, at 7:00 p.m. the council meeting. And regarding Curriculum and Instruction, we met with Dr. Trabona and Dr. Sprieto on Tuesday, December 3rd. Actually, most of our agenda has already been discussed tonight. So again, like Dr. Sprieto mentioned, the High School Explorer Program, that partnership with Hackett-Sack University Medical Center, or Hackett-Sack Meridian. We're really excited about this program. We'll see how it goes. It's going to be starting soon, and I'm sure we will share updates with the public as it progresses. Also, chronic absenteeism was discussed by Dr. Trabona. Few other updates for the ESSA, the release data. We did receive some information. for the ESSA, the release data, we did receive some information and this entire state by the twenty thirty-one and twenty thirty-two school year, which it sounds far away, but will be here before we know it. We have to plan for it. The entire state needs to meet eighty percent for both ELA and math. They, the baseline for this, this, it didn't exactly make sense, but the baseline for this was the twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen part, right? I'm sharing all the details so everyone can hear what we hear and understand. And this also seems to be a theme, the state does not provide any financial or support, any other type of support for school districts. It's basically up to every school district to figure it out. So, we are working hard with this. Thank God we have Dr. Chabona. And then also, the updated District Five-O-four Manual, Dr. Pfeifer, Dr. Chabona worked on this. Procedure has been redone for establishing and renewing Five-O fours and the new guidelines will be posted on our website. That concludes the CNI report.
Thank you, Ms. Aaron Trout. As far as New Jersey School Board Association goes, they do have some interesting webinars. If anybody has any time during the day, regrettably, I have to work a full-time job, but tomorrow they have one, a primer on reorganization meetings for New Jersey School Board members. If anyone is able to attend, it is eleven, it is ten AM. You do get credits for all of these. Several of us up here are certified board members. When you accrue twenty credits, you can register on the website and you can watch it right on their YouTube channel. They also have another interesting one on Thursday, Education Matters Podcast, The Connection Between School Culture, Climate and Leadership. That's at one PM. I'd also like to friendly reminder that everyone needs to complete their mandated trainings. If you have any questions about completing them, Karen Tay is around for another month or so and she, she's the one who stays on top of that for us. I also reached out but did not hear back, which makes me think perhaps I didn't reach out to the correct person, our new school board. I feel like we've had forty of them over the past several months, to see her availability for the January twenty-first meeting, additionally to inquire about just the fee schedule and, and the availability for a superintendent search should we choose to go with that route. Several of us have been on the board through that multiple times. We've done it with and without, but I just wanted to get the current offerings that they have. They have different packages, they have different prices, just so that we can start thinking about all of our options. But again, I will reach back out to her because I'm thinking I, maybe, I don't know. I will check, I'll triple check. Dr. Sprito is looking her up right now because I feel like I...
Is that her?
No? Okay, I'm better, yeah, all right. I think I was still doing the old inner person. Kelly Mitchell. All right, Kelly Mitchell. I'm coming for you when I get home. Okay. Ms. Moki Colton, Passaic County School Board Association.
So, we actually met last night. They recognized our very own Mr. Jay Shortway for his three years and thanked him and I thanked him as well and welcomed Giselle Vega, who will be coming on the board. And then the subject of last night's presentation and meeting, excuse me, was harnessing the power of public relations, social media and technology in schools, given by Dr. Janine Dutte, Superintendent of Schools, North Warren Regional School District. It was very informative and when I have access to the slides, I will share them with the board. I think it's informative for everyone to get our school out there a little more and what our kids are doing and for our own parents as well as other members who maybe don't have law degree students. The next meeting will be on January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. That topic will be importance of charter schools in public education and that also is hybrid. So, if you can't attend in person, you can attend virtually as always. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Palouse, have CPAC and PTO.
Thank you, Madam President. We'll start with the foundation. We'd like to thank everyone who participated in the raffle fundraiser. Congratulations to Robin Bryant, the winner. We were able to raise over fifteen hundred dollars and we are looking forward to an upcoming fundraiser, which will be announced soon. Just a reminder for CPAC, again, the Seventh Annual Five K Run Walk will be May fourth, twenty twenty-five. You'll hear that for a few more months, but I want to make sure you get it under calendar. It's a very, very good event and we'd like to see it, you know, well-attended if possible. Jefferson PTO on Tuesday, next Tuesday, December seventeenth, there is a giveback at Blue Moon Mexican Cafe in Wycoff. The giveback is for lunch or for dinner, takeout or dine-in, and you can even use catering or gift card sales as well. Just keep in mind that you have to keep your receipts because the way you have to submit, you have twenty-four hours after you make your purchase, to email it to community@bluemoonmexicancafe.com. All this information that I get is usually on Facebook, each of their webs, you know, their, their Facebook pages. Again, that's for Jefferson School. This week, LMS will be joining Jefferson Elementary in a toy drive. Please donate any unwrapped toys, can be collected through the sixteenth, either at Jefferson School or at the, or at LMS, here at LMS. The donations will be delivered on the eighteenth of December for children in the hematology and oncology unit at St. Joe's Hospital. LMS would like you to save the date for Yella's Giveback Relaxing, No Cook Thursday Night by supporting LMS at the All Day Yella's Giveback, Thursday, December nineteenth. Whether for lunch or for dinner, twenty percent will go back to Lincoln Middle School. So, you can order some food and watch the Thursday night football game, bite into a juicy burger, hear the crunch of your Yella's fries, and you can wash it down with delicious shakes. I did not make that up. Took it off of the Facebook page. It was too good for me to make it. Then, there's a Five Below Fund Giveback as well. There's a, there's a flyer here, which again, you can find it on the Facebook page and it's, it's ongoing. It's from December ninth through December fifteenth. Ten percent of all purchases will, will go back to Roosevelt School PTO and the store hours are from eight AM until ten PM. And again, you will need this flyer, so if you can go onto the Facebook page, you'll print that out. Please participate if you want to buy your holiday gifts before the fifteenth. And then, there's going to be a couple of things that I repeat here that were already mentioned, but Treps Marketplace is Tuesday, December seventeenth, six-thirty to eight PM at Roosevelt, in Roosevelt Gym. All three elementary schools have their fifth graders participating, selling, you know, their inventions and if anyone's interested, you must bring cash, you do not fake credit cards. I do like what Washington posted on their, their, their Facebook page. Washington PTO posted, you know, about what is Treps and it's real kids making real products, student-run businesses, handcrafted items and one-of-a-kind gifts. So, again, you can go and participate and buy some holiday gifts and help the fifth graders for all three elementary schools. And then I think the last thing we're going to mention again is the volleyball. We were invited to participate. Unfortunately, I cannot make it on that Friday night, but if anybody wants to be involved, yeah, you know, please, please reach out to Irene Lutz and anyone who cannot participate but would like to attend anyway. There's ticket prices because again, it's a fundraiser. Players are five dollars apiece, adult spectators will be three dollars apiece and any children spectators will be two dollars apiece. So, I believe that concludes my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palouse. Mr. Tataro, Buildings and Grounds.
Thank you, President Goff. The Buildings and Grounds Committee met last Tuesday and the following are updates on various items taking place throughout the district. First, we are currently securing quotes for paving at Roosevelt and Jefferson, as well as various projects over at Jefferson, including the drains, retaining walls and, as I said, the paving as well. Over at the high school, we are, we have aerated and seed the football field. As you may see, there's a turf cover that has been placed on the field as well. And LMS, we received a cover for the generator fence, which we should be putting on shortly. And lastly, we have engaged Saint, construction management and consulting company on an as-needed basis for various work that will be taking place over the summer. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tataro. At this time, public be heard. You may ask questions or make comments on educational issues or school matters.
Barry Houston, two thirty-five, Washington Avenue. First of all, thank you for granting my permit. I appreciate that. And I guess with all the publicity we've been having with the rink, I have enough kids for midget team this year.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. We have, with all the publicity we've been having with the rink, we actually have enough bodies for a midget team this year. We got three teams. Midges won't start until the first of the year, but the other guys have started. And unfortunately, our undefeated season has already gone by us. So, but we did have two teams in our thirty-one years, two teams that did go undefeated also. But congratulations to the soccer team, that's great. Hopefully, they stick around at this high school and do team. One other quick question. I know in an email, I asked for the one set of leakers to be moved from the smaller gates. I was told that that's not going to be necessary because the district is going to do the snow, snow removal now. Is there any reason why you're choosing to undertake this?
Do you want me to answer?
It's up to you. It's up to you.
We don't have an active service agreement with the town at this time, so the property belongs to us and we will maintain it until such an agreement is reached.
But even though I have insurance, my, my insurance covers the cleanup and everything.
Our attorney is sitting there listening and I'm not sure that that's the case. Unless there is an active permit at the time you're removing the snow, your insurance does not cover the rink at that time.
I beg to differ. My insurance does cover that, but...
You, you're alleging that your insurance covers the rink three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
Well, no, don't remind me of that. It's just from last month until April.
You don't have a permit twenty-four hours a day, every day of the week.
So, I can clean it in between my time period.
I mean, that, that's not what we're asking you to do. The, the district is more than happy to clean off the property until an agreement is reached, if an agreement is to be reached with the, with the...
Have you ever seen what it takes to clean the rink down to the pavement and dry before it freezes over?
Mr. Houston, I was in receipt of the email exchange between you and Dr. Sprito.
Okay.
He answered your question. I just answered your question.
Well, then my other question is, how are negotiations between the board and the Board of Ed?
That is pending litigation and we are not allowed to discuss it publicly at this time.
Thank you very much.
Any other public comment at this time? At this time, we will do general comments and questions from the board, for new business, for old business. Please just let us know what it is that you are saying. I will start with you, Ms. Moki Colton.
I knew you were going to say that. That's a big thought. I just wanted to echo something that Mr. Palouse brought up. The toy drive, the donations will actually go through the seventeen. You can drop it off, unwrap new toys anytime during school hour, so not really is the time, at LMS or Jefferson. And it, it, it does go to children at St. Joe's Oncology Pediatric Clinic, who are obviously there for health reasons. So, why not brighten someone's day? And then, I wanted to mention to the public, I've had some conversations with the town and officials about children crossing at crosswalks and drivers being careful. I almost, I have multiple gray hairs that I didn't have before because a child came out in front of my car and then I almost saw another child get hit, all within one day. I know it's, the weather's terrible and we're all rushing. Everyone's doing what they're supposed to be doing, but accidents happen. There was a terrible accident in front of my house last week at night. I believe the town has helped with that by putting brighter lights on our crossing walk, crosswalks, which has helped tremendously to see people crossing at night. But obviously, our children are crossing after school, during the day when there's school traffic and buses and all these things. I'm just asking to everybody, please slow down, talk to your children, make sure they're crossing where you're supposed to because crossing guards can only do so much. I wanted to congratulate all of our Governors Educators of the Year. I had the privilege to be on a team for one of the schools this year to review and use the rubric and grade some of the nominations. I wish we could recognize everyone. As an educator myself, it's important. We don't do it for the recognition, but it's really nice to get it and to feel appreciated. And I just received my shirt order from the middle school. It was wonderful and I made me think, oh, I should mention the barricade because they make t-shirts too and anybody can really call them and order. Not only do they do lunch once a month, but they also make their own shirts and it's fabulous and they're great quality. And happy holidays to everyone and we'll see you next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moki Colton. Mr. Carr.
Just some general comments. First and foremost, congratulations to all of our LMS award recipients, especially your undefeated soccer team. That was quite a, quite an achievement. Happy birthday to Mr. Palouse. Thirty-nine never looked so good. Jay, thank you for your years of service here on the board to the Hawthorne Public School District and your commitment to use the community. It was a pleasure sitting next to you. Sure I sit actually somewhere else, but not here. Janine, thank you also for all your hard work and best of luck to you in your new position. And I'd like to wish everyone a safe and happy, healthy holiday season.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Mr. Shortway.
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate Dr. Sprito and Mrs. Murray. Good luck on your new endeavors. To my fellow board members, it's been a pleasure to work with you and it's been a great experience. The proudest thing, I think, this board represents, we represent the children first. And I think that's a great, great thing for everybody in this town. This is a great school board and you should thank them when you see them on the streets or in the supermarket. It's a tough job. It's a lot of hours and nobody gets paid. Also, Merry Christmas, happy holidays and hopefully I'll see everybody somewhere in town. That's it. Oh, and that was Javon.
Mr. Doyle.
Some general comments. I want to start on behalf of Hef. Extend a very deep thank you to Anthony Palouse, AKA The Captain. I believe the total is still running, but he sold individually an excess of over six hundred dollars worth of raffle tickets for their last fundraiser, so thank you to Mr. Palouse for that. Congratulations to Janine, you know, you served us very well while you were here and wish you luck on your new endeavors. Congratulations to Dr. Sprito, as much of a tough pill that is to swallow. It's well-deserved and I'll reserve any other comments. We still got you for six months, so we can format you a little bit more and whatever a couple of hairs you got left up there, make sure that they're looking on by, by then. And it's, it's never goodbye. It's see you later. All right. And finally, Merry Christmas, happy holidays and a happy and healthy new year everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Mr. Clivio.
General comments. Mr. Shortway, thank you for the three years you've dedicated to the Hawthorne Board of Education. It's been great working with you and you're... It's been great working with you, and your time is appreciated. I want to wish happy holidays to everybody that makes up the Hawthorne public school family, including sometimes our unsung heroes. Erica did bring up something about the crossing guards. There was a news story this week, this week or last week, that there was a crossing guard in New Jersey that lost his life helping out two kids that were in harm's way. So, you know, some of those that make up the Hawthorne education family include our crossing guards, and just want to acknowledge them and everybody that participates in the district as a whole.
Thank you. Mr. Tataro.
Also, general comments and congratulations again to the Governor Educator of the Year Award recipients. Jay, it's been a pleasure to sit beside you and work with you on the board and get to know you. It's really been a great few years, and thank you for your service to the community. And lastly, thank you to Ms. Murray for all your efforts that you provide for this district and wish you best of luck in the future. Rick, you're not getting anything from me yet, but we'll save that for a few months from now. And just happy holidays, Merry Christmas, happy New Year to everybody, and looking forward to seeing everybody and hopefully more people at the January meeting.
Ms. Aaron Trout.
A few general comments. Jay, thank you for your service to the board. I know you're an active parent, coach, community member, and we'll see you around, but it's been great serving with you. Second, congrats to Ms. Mulkey Colton, who mentioned about the Governor Educators of the Year here in Hawthorne, but she was actually a recipient in her district's care. Congratulations. Also, I wanted to mention what a great job the students did for Peter and the Star Catcher. So talking with Mrs. Greber, many of the students in the performance, so there's on stage, behind the scenes, many of them, it was their first time ever participating in a production like that, and they really, you would never know. They really did such a great job. I also love my friendship bracelets. I love the play, Star Catcher and Bear Pride is a cute fundraiser we had for the theater program. And Merry Christmas to everyone, happy holidays. I can't believe this year has gone by already, but we shall continue next year. And Janine, you are here for another, one more meeting, right?
One more.
Okay, all right. I'll say my goodbyes then, Ms. Murray. So that concludes my comments.
Mr. Palouse.
Thank you. General comments, I'll shorten mine up too since everybody else is going to wait for Dr. Sprito and Ms. Murray. Obviously, thank you for your service. But Jay, Shortway down there, it's a pleasure serving with you. Thank you for your time and service and dedication to Hawthorne. Mr. Clivio, thank you for your donation and recognizing Mr. Colke. And again, I will shorten it up and just say Merry Christmas, happy holidays to everyone, and have a safe New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Palouse. I do want to just say a few quick things before I turn it over to Dr. Sprito, who does want to speak about his pending retirement. Erica, congratulations for being Teacher of the Year. Everyone should be, but particularly, congratulations to you for being honored. Mr. Shortway, for those who have not had the pleasure of working alongside you, you may not know what an incredibly generous person he is. I mean, gives and gives and gives and gives to the community quietly and won't make a big deal out of it, but donates and sponsors and hosts and just gives of himself continually. So I know that that won't stop you being on the other side, but we are better for having known you for sure, and we will miss you. Though I am biased, I would like to also congratulate Will Goff, who did his official signing for La Crosse from Izagordo University. At this time, he is the only senior who has signed. I am hopeful that there will be others, but I say this and I will say it again, he is living proof that you get what you give. And he has given all to the high school. He is in clubs, he is in sports, he donates his time as an EMT. So Hawthorne is a great place, and the more you invest in it, the more he invests in you, and he is living proof of that. So he's gotten accepted to every college he applied to, offers for athletics. So just, we could not be more proud as a community, but also as your mom.
Now you owe her $20, Will.
I would like to just throw out there, you know, I'm incredibly happy about the turnout this evening. They left us, but the people that did come through our doors, and that we honored them for the Patriots pen and for the soccer undefeated season. I'm a firm believer in showing appreciation and just showing that we are, you know, thinking of them. So if anybody has any ideas for the possibly January 21 meeting, I don't know if Dr. Sprito, if you have any ideas, we can certainly put our heads together and think. I mean, anyone in the community, adults alike as well, staff members, what we could certainly think about. It doesn't have to be a big deal. We don't have to, you know, just bringing them and honoring them for their time and their dedication or whatever it is. I would love to keep the momentum moving forward just to get people in and just to meet them. I think that it's definitely beneficial. I would like to just make a note that our next meeting is January 7. That will be our reorganization meeting, which will take place at the high school at 7:00 p.m., at which time we will swear in our new member, Giselle Vega, and Jen and I will be re sworn in, and we will bid adieu to Mr. Shortway, should he choose to come to the meeting. And we will reorganize internally and elect a new president and vice president. That's, and happy holidays to everybody. Merry Christmas, happy Hanukkah, all of the holidays, and hope everyone has a happy and healthy New Year. That being said, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sprito, who wants to speak.
Thank you. So I just wanted to share a few things in regard to my retirement. So I wanted to start by saying, as you saw on the agenda tonight, you know, I will be retiring on August 1 of 2025. But I want to share that after 10 amazing years of serving this school district, I am announcing my retirement from the position of Superintendent of Schools. Please know that growing up in this incredible town and returning to serve this community has been one of the greatest honors of my life. But after 32 years in the field of education and 10 wonderful years with the school district, I've decided it's time to embark on the next chapter. Being the superintendent in Hawthorne has always been more than a job to me. It's been personal, and I want to share why. So for those of you who are not aware, the Sprito family has a long history in the Hawthorne schools. First, many of you know that myself and my brother and sister all attended the Hawthorne schools. I was graduated in class of 88. Prior and prior becoming the superintendent, I coached high school football here at Hawthorne High School and served as the Hawthorne Education Foundation President. Also, my four children and seven of my nieces and nephews have either attended or are currently attending our schools. Finally, for those who are not aware, my father served for 18 years as the Assistant Superintendent and then Superintendent of the school district. My mother served for 28 years as a teacher at Roosevelt School. My sister for 18 years as a substitute on the PTOs and with Project Graduation. My brother coached high school basketball here in Hawthorne for six years, and my wife was involved for 10 years as a PTO member and with the band parents, which equates to over 90 years of service to the Hawthorne Public School District. So when I say this job was personal, that gives you a little bit of a background as to why. But as I said, working in the Hawthorne Public Schools has truly been one of the most rewarding experiences in my career. The relationships I've built here are invaluable and will always hold a special place in my heart. I'm also thankful for the opportunity to work with the members of this board and all of the previous board members, going all the way back to Michelle Hines, who was the board president at the time when I was hired. But I'm also, you know, so fortunate to have worked with such a hardworking and talented team of administrators, a dedicated faculty and staff, and an amazing student body. I always say we have the best students around, and I stand by that statement. But as I close this important chapter in my life, I leave with a sense of pride in all that we've accomplished together. And I say that word "together" because that's been the key. And I could share that we've accomplished quite a bit. I actually put together all document that I shared with the board about our accomplishments, but we've accomplished quite a bit. Over the past few weeks, I've spent a lot of time reflecting on my journey, and I'm reminded of the countless moments that have shaped me, moments in our schools, on our fields, and in our community. I'm proud of how the school community has worked together to support our collective accomplishments and the many positive changes that will benefit students and families for many years to come. Together, we've navigated numerous challenges, but we've also celebrated many successes and worked hard to provide our children with a safe and welcoming environment. Throughout my tenure, I prioritize students and committed myself to our district's success. I want to publicly thank our parents and families for your unwavering support and trust in me educating and caring for your children. As I transition into retirement, I'm excited for the future of the district. I have the confidence that our schools will continue to flourish under the guidance of our talented educators and leaders who are committed to the same values we all hold dear. While I will miss seeing our students and families, I will continue to be the district's biggest supporter. And I look forward to staying connected, cheering on students, cheering on our students from the sidelines and hearing about all the wonderful accomplishments that lie ahead for our students and schools. And the last thing I just want to share is that please know that my decision to announce my retirement does not diminish my commitment to this school district. I remain fully dedicated to my role and responsibilities in the months ahead and will continue to focus on supporting new initiatives and ensuring the district's continued success. One of my top priorities will be to facilitate a smooth and seamless transition, working closely with the board, administrators, faculty, and staff to maintain the momentum we've built and ensure the district continues to thrive. Thank you again for this incredible journey that we've all shared. It's been a pleasure to serve my hometown, and I wish each of you and your families continued success and happiness. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sprito. We have six months to come up with a closing remarks for you. We are going to private session. Be it resolved that the Hawthorne Board of Education convenes an executive session to discuss exec matters pertaining to legal matters. Be it further resolved that it is anticipated the executive session will be for 45 minutes in duration and that action may or may not be taken. Be it further resolved that the minutes of the executive session will be made available upon the determination by the board that the disclosure of these minutes will not detrimentally affect any right or interest of the board, and the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I entertain a motion to go into private.
Motion.
Second.
Motioned by Mr. Carr and seconded by Mr. Tataro. Any discussion? Will Paul, please.
Mr. Shortway.
Yes.
Mr. Tataro.
Yes.
Mr. Carr.
Yes.
Mr. Clivio.
Yes.
Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Ms. Aaron Trout.
Yes.
Ms. Mulkey Colton.
Yes.
Mr. Palouse.
Yes.
Mr. Goff.
Mrs. Goff.
Yes.